...that came out of a lot of... ...that he followed a drop of water as... And followed a drop of water that hit the house. What happens to that drop of water as it goes down? And also focused on the health of the water. My experience with land, Florida, and health protection of water supplies. And did everything.
Why you didn't stop it?
So you were present, Tim, you did a quick check on the drop. Well, you know, we... I got simulated in science in the nineteen fifties and early sixties. Russian satellite. All of a sudden. Oh, you wanna get a picture? Hey, Joe Fainland. Not a certificate for your S A two. From the league of municipalities. And we just wanted to get you... Well, the league sent this up for your certificate.
But so where my...
We've been meeting in the office today. But someone gets there and... We won't be able to do nothing. Hey, I'm looking for a motion to approve the special meeting notes from April second and the regular meeting minutes. On second, if I have any questions, corrections, comments, roll call.
Mr. Boston?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett? Yes.
I'll make the motion, we accept the Treasury report and the May bill list and the interim bill list. Second. Questions, comments?
He did.
Prices and prices. Kind of like, how went up with our I T? Uh, not recently, but I'd see some big bills.
Really? Ten thousand dollars?
Yeah. How? I have not done that anymore.
Well, later on, when you just, you know, I mean, I don't know what's going on. I think it was some computer and stuff, maybe that drove this one up a little bit. But at least we were right here.
Looking how much we took from April. I got... Thanks. Um, like, all right. Yes. What's in the court? You had other than the recent court? No, there are any questions? I... Uh, yes, they definitely pulled over. Lots of them. According to this sixty-nine and forty-nine summonses issued. You have any idea why the other twenty weren't issued? Local community, what, when, when, what do we miss?
There is some, uh, there is some local books itself over. Right. I just didn't know if there was general thought, and I know that you personally, I'm just curious. Because obviously, we all know that there's an applicant in front of us that's gonna bring some drug trafficking in and it's a different... About being local or not local, for certain people. And I was just kinda curious about twenty of these stuffs. Where they fell into that line. Yeah, so I think... I could go back and I'd have...
Anything come on? For generally...
Right. It's sometimes, uh, personally, it has to be... It may suck. I don't think we had that last month. So I understand that. Thank you. So...
Uh, nothing, uh, here's the... Many questions? So, any knowledge about Upruck doing the, uh...
I gotta phone call a week before.
A week before.
Maybe, maybe it's hot.
I don't know. I had no fire pressure to do that. So I was just asking, how was the pressure at... Can a full fan...
Uh, around...
No pressure, but it came back.
Yeah, well, it just was more like nine thirty in the morning. And I happened to be, well, I was being your neighbor, then I told him, "What?" And so I was like, I gotta assume it was because I do know that pressure in the high heat rates to begin with. And then to open it once fully, probably would be the whole nation. So that's exactly the way I planned the answer.
Oh, I had Tom Riley's all...
I see.
Yes.
So we... Give us a range of... That's like... That's worth...
Yeah, yeah, that was great.
That's for... Paul, getting back to, uh, looking at these two invoices for me, the I T costs, a lot of this subscription cost, uh... See, there's voice over I T for the police department is... No, it's no. That one bill is... That's all under... Okay. Um, and a lot of this is licensing. Off the license. I might bury it, Phil.
I'll say that on later.
I could read the audit report. You know, I read it this past week. I'm glad to read everything.
God bless you.
No, I, I read the summation and I skimmed through the... You know, but I could go through the end, the most important part. Hey, they also, uh, yeah. County first report? If I have any questions, if you have anything else? Don't enforce it, Paul, you have anything? You know, Jeff, I don't speak very poorly here, but unfortunately, uh, for all I don't know, Jeff is giving us notice. He's gonna be with us until, uh, June ninth, I believe, is his last day. Uh, so Lisa's already got it out on the league of other communities without looking for. If the... Well, I would imagine, uh... Uh, with... Carl's... Yeah. Powers. Play... Uh... And want an available clothing. And we're thinking about doing those for some days. But if somebody can... Aside from... Pause. Have a chance on that? Well, actually, you could follow, oh, about the nine hundred. Bringing in line, we...
Probably not.
Okay. That's what I have on. Report report. Please, Gary. I'm glad to see there are not a lot of, uh, tax on this list for this month. For motion to the testing, police department, four things, seven, four counties. Don't even tell us what's important. Any reports building, everything? Approved, found, general area. Then...
Yes.
Yes.
So? You? All this... I live... Fine.
Tell us that if I come... That's not a part of the... So, you know, how to...
Like, pay value. They ask me, a dollar, that's easy, they go, it's... Rowing you.
They're not supposed to get this.
Oh. Have first, you can close yourself, and pick out, have a... Both of the... It's all, they're all state contract?
Right.
So I don't have to...
Right.
Um, I mean, in that way... Oh.
Right.
Bigger. And so what's that for? How? Uh, now, good. Here. Okay. I'll, I'll make that one. Uh, what's the ninth? Yeah, I'll see you in a second. We're not... I could do that. Our cap is on our turn, you know, so all the person... Thank you so much.
I think I can do it.
You're perfect, and I'm gonna thank you so much for me.
Uh, I think it's attractive.
We can do that, yep. Okay. That's the thing, others kind of... But I haven't heard from... Maybe you've done it in office. Uh, first, formal, our boss, in our office. Get something ready. Here, introduce us to you, and please, um, in my place, let's just check with that. Proper cover. Um, before I start. I see. Proper. Well, any here, do something down, if I'd like to better defend. Uh, the, um, last month, we have a school board, the, uh, current plan is a little growth, we have to... Do all the reins, it'd be bad, we have to, I'm sure they, um, what the... Sure they done, Mr. Glenn. Good call. Uh, tonight, we're looking for, uh, civil stuff that committee, fairly have the case. About the last stuff. Uh, if it's actually, um, sorry, if I'm wrong, Joe. Number one will be progress in Warren Street. Number two, which is two foot road, and you know, we put an application to... One of them. Paul. Looking for the, many to approve us, dude, go ahead and do that project like you thought.
No, uh, Joe and I discussed it in, in the fourth one, it was... Uh, of the... Yeah, no, I...
Anyone else have any questions? I'll make the motion, we also got it. Thank you, we'll just, uh, go on and come on that, keep on doing. Or something like this. Uh, Comcast update. You know, for small series, um, some of the Comcast, they still do not have a schedule on here at office. For them, we need a schedule when that's on, and I keep getting, ah, we don't have a schedule there. So I'm not sure if we can ramp that up in some manner, or if we just... And month, month, month. Um, I think, yeah. Yeah, I realize that it's difficult, they call for them, but not one of these things, they... Terms. Terms. Um, we've also, many communication with their office, ten, five, seven, various, great connectivity. Now, the secret season, we've been noticing, we brought it downtown. Perfect time of year to be doing restoration, grassy grove, we all, under all, long grass, like a week now. Perfect time of year to be doing rest, rest, and grassy grove, we all under all lawn grass for the week now. Then you get out there, we're, we're on top of them pretty hard right now. So if you get any more complaints, please let us know, and we can point those areas, and they should be, there's a lot of areas down. We're working with them on that. Just seeing municipal building, the executive section?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, we're working with Joe on the, on the FEMA project of Ojalo. Uh, in a colder day, and Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, if I have the information wrong here. In order to include the drainage improvements with that section of the road. Being it's so flat and it's, say, one hundred percent, accomplish the necessary goal, need to survey. Not a very, still flat. So FEMA said is that, you know, FEMA something, the surveys needed, they'll pay for if the drainage project is feasible. For the time, the town has. So, we need to spend that a half day, go out there, survey and process the data and, and plan to get them, so, am I correct, Joe, that was the conversation?
There's, uh, there's two parts to that, the one is hazard mitigation, which is to mitigate and stop the flooding and damage that was caused by flooding. The other is restoration, which is, and this is a big part of the seventy-five percent FEMA has got covered in twenty-five. Under hazard mitigation, and if we qualify, we should have to teach a hundred percent of what's called rehab, that ninety-one thousand dollars is available for hazard mitigation. But that could be for the, form drain, curving on the one side, keep the water from getting underneath, washing out the side. Survey, let it sound, should be probably, gotta make sure, probably, towards form what's like.
Looks like a half day, so like, somewhere between two hundred thousand dollars. So that, that'd be part of the speaker reimbursement, if we can get.
I think we could take that.
Problem that we have to. We're supposed to, many give approval, go do that survey, then we can accept that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Knocked into my list, any questions for me on any of these items, or anything else that you don't have?
I have some questions, but since we're, you're gonna stay for exactly one people.
Yeah, I'm full of thoughts. Never a good deal on false talk, any executives?
You wanna talk the audit now, or do the budget later, or you don't wanna talk about the audit at all, or? No, we're talking about the audit, but we have to, the audit and the budget both, so it's your choice, what would you like to know?
Do you want to do it all at once?
Uh, well, we have to do, before we do the budget adoption, we have to do the FOLO and, uh, the public hearing. So, if you wanna do that.
We'll do it all when you break these things.
You wanna do the budget, and then I'll do the audit afterwards?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you have an executive?
Yes, man.
The only thing I like to move, you have to tell you, I mentioned the national conference publicly, you, we're still going through a process trying to get funds, and, uh, grants from the federal government and the state, but, uh. And we're discussing, I'm just like the public to know, I've done this fine work, and, 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 all of them up there, contact, where. So it's probably. The work we do, we can expect. Okay, whole business, that being in county courts, we're trying to address them, but. He was, the gentleman brought up last month. I saw him writing a little paper, but most of that is the same nation, east of Congress. Some of these, it's, it's an idea, I mean, you have these options, just where there's some things, some things, but. Downwater land, you know, what's that means? Extreme line, make this option, you know, property. So, I don't know if we can do this, but, grant, but, that is, and I wanna bring, okay, you, you, you know, these types of, a lot of that is a lot. But I think we could please try to have a meeting, an envelope, and have a day with them, and, you know, whatever they're here, but people get to hear what they're doing, obviously, regarding this topic, that, because, I don't, this is what I think we need. This three years, and so we can count, and it looks like the special government needs to make. Look. A lot of. It's initially handling, that's like two year, like three years now, and then EPA just came in about, I would say, four months ago, and the EPA actually has an office set up at the recreation building in Washington County. So, I don't know how much we need, look, they're in there, I know that EPA is kind of taking over, for example, so, I don't know how much probably. I mean, they were doing everything for the long testing. EPA, and, like, sort of trying to be, you know, lower than, second to all now. You have that anything around? So business, yeah, I guess we're at the button. Which, which resolutions can we discuss in common?
President.
Okay. Great, uh, trip to the.
Uh, so every year we have the FOLO ordinance, what the FOLO ordinance is, FOLO there to protect what they get dealt with, um, and basically what it does, we're allowed to have certain liabilities every year, and we don't use that interest for a loan. Thank this, I think, this doesn't mean that we have to use it, it's not like that, so, to us, it was a great.
I'll make a. Any none, I'll make a motion, first, have a comment? All ready? Looking for a motion to, uh, stop where I said the one. Time, like, comment? No?
May I?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I'll be, I'll give you a break for a moment. Okay, so, uh, good evening everyone, so we're here tonight, obviously to, uh, taking part to adopt the budget. Um, so the budget this year, again, it's a lot of hard work that went into this, you know, um, thank the governing body for their attention, all the departments, as well, people, Shannon, these, uh, fifty-two, uh, to get us to the point that we're finally ready to adopt. Um, just a quick note, uh, so that everyone knows, once every three years, we're required to go through the local state budget review, this so happened to be our year. Uh, we submitted our budget as was introduced on April seventeen, and it, it's back, our notes, it's fresh. Uh, Dan, if anyone wants to stop getting all the information, that's, if you're newer, uh, please, I made a call, call off. Back to, uh, to stay with you, we're, we're, and, quick, easy, just a couple of clarification questions, I'll be saying to the budget, I think, for, for anyone who's, and, uh, just later, that's, that's, very much. Came in under both the appropriation of the tax book cap. This year, the overall increase of the percentage was six point three five, uh, once that equates to the average of that home, which is, is one hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. And that means that for that home, it went up about two hundred and thirty-six dollars, one hundred and thirty-three dollars annually, for. So for every hundred thousand dollars, approximately forty-nine dollars, forty-eight dollars, that's, that's, I believe, final number. Uh, so our house is at that a hundred thousand dollars, it gives nine dollar increase, two hundred thousand, seven dollars, three hundred thousand, six dollars, and four hundred thousand.
Apparently, really, it's a hundred thousand dollar, hundred, definitely, hundred thousand, six hundred thousand, if it's nine fifty, possible next.
I'll, I'll adjust my presentation for next year, then, sorry.
The average home was six seventy-two, but if you make it, you do it a hundred thousand, everybody know, like, my house is just.
Uh, the one other thing that we've done for the last few years now, is because of, um, the increases that we've had between our pension, our healthcare, and our insurance, is what's the part that's completely out of our control? Um, so this year, out of that hundred and thirty-three dollar annual increase, the uncontrollable part of that is thirty-six dollars and twenty-seven. Um, so that's obviously a very large portion of it that's out of our control, uh, we have to provide the pension, the capital, the, the cap. So, that's, uh, that's, that's really all that I have, and, and, Bill, to answer your question from earlier about the IP, unfortunately, it goes into the old, the OE line, so you have to go back to Shannon, because I can't see it as it is now.
If I have to, yeah, for ten, like, look at their.
Oh. Okay, uh, so I, I gave all of you a, a handout, with meaning, uh, four pages long, um, but, the first page, really all the financial information, uh, is the management suggestions from the report. Uh, the page in the middle is just the status prior year recommendations, which I'll go over which ones, and, and the final page is just the. Um, so overall financially, um, we did okay this year, uh, we had revenues of twenty-six million four hundred nine thousand, we had expenditures of twenty-five, three hundred and four hundred and thirty thousand, and we utilized bond dollars of three hundred and sixty-five thousand. The current bond balance increased by about five hundred. So on standard, I have. That's, that's. That one. Sixty-five. That's. That, eight hundred. That cap. Four, eight hundred. Thousand.
Five?
Pay a hundred eighty-five thousand on total worth of twenty-five. And for the bond that we're in, you can pay eighty thousand dollars. Uh. You have revenue? It. That's. Uh. One thousand. Thousand. Eight hundred. That's. That's. You have, but.
I don't. That's what I. What's going on? Can help them with that. It's a high facility, it's their infrastructure, but, uh, the facility, if it had an issue, like, we really have a line that goes literally directly to their driveway. So we're not part of their infrastructure problem, I don't think they can pass that on to us, it's only if they have the.
Five hundred.
Those that need to be. There will be entries that are, sure, people have, on, which fever hasn't given a clue of what that number is. Something like.
Uh, okay, so I'm, I'm the second page of the handout. I'm, I'm. On, on the second page of the handout is, uh, all the management suggestions, but you have. On on the second page of the handout is uh all the management suggestions that we had from this year. So what management suggestion is, is it something that we found that um could be improved upon, but it didn't rise to level of their expectation. Um, so there's definitely just. Um, so the first one was the the reinsurance coming outside of office. Um, they're just not being turned over to the town in the town that matters. I understand that it's, you know, a matter of time. Time is obviously the time. And that's for. But. Uh, the first thing, uh, we just noted that on on the purchase of our three and all the couples that you drew. Um, that was a problem that was actually changed by. Uh, since that's just. The appropriate. Uh. Just one of. So this was that's only one seven. Seven so good. Which is definitely not the audience that's important on this. Over time, so. But it's just probably the final notice time to give this thing. The state and federal government hates to borrow out the harden everything that needs to be. Worry about, but again, I noticed to all give uh more than five, just saying, it could happen if someone come knock on your door one day. The next page, we're gonna kind of skip over because I'll handle it on the on the stage. But uh, it's just talking about the recommendation of the audit and where they're at here. Hope that's said. The first three recommendations that were there are the three that remain from the prior year. Uh, segregation movies, again, nature would be small town. Um, it's just something that it's it's gonna be there, we're using the same. And we know that that that's it. It's what I thought, but it's. That's the eighth page. Now, yeah, we have to get. And that's being closer to appropriate capital fund. This is more of a function of the way that the improvements have been set up in there and that not everything is fitting by drawing there. Uh, you know, Shannon's able to sort it all out in the end, but the problem with the general capital fund is is that they're so so specific to what the improvement itself is. That it it puts the tension. But then the final two, they're they're new. Uh, I know that we had discussed this as it was known. Um, but uh, but I I don't feel like this is gonna be the first. Um, but that is why I intend when there is an over expenditure of appropriation line for a transplant, I think. Yes, the uncharted order. Five, first. Question comment. Okay. Uh. That's.
So a motion to the public hearing owners, number one hundred one, five months to the council, in the process of. Definitely for the confirmation, even if very much two month early renewal, so to the to the council for the presentation confirmation. Box twenty six, box two, probably for me. Open. Um, one. Uh. Think I'm thinking most of the points, I don't know, but I think that. Anyone wishing to comment regarding the stories, well, it's all down to the comments. Are you gonna make a motion for a public comment? Anybody with a second? All favor, five. Anyone wanna make a motion to stop here? I personally don't. But. But like, I mean, they keep the tax on stuff, but they're making it.
It's in there.
It's in there.
It's so much more.
Yeah. It's so much more. Have both the. But some.
Yeah.
How. Really. I'm making. Uh. No, I don't agree with what he. So what that that's not the mission. Not not. I mean, they test them free from the. Eight, twelve, three on the top. Not their trade. So, I don't know, I guess with the law, the law on it. So like, that's a lot of wrong. Uh. Um, we got the. No. Uh, five, um, question, wish to directly. That's. And I. Right. Uh, the. All of the we we need to work in that.
Yeah.
Okay, I I'm gonna put a second uh public comment up before executive session. I think I'll make a motion, really, public comments. All favor. All favor.
All right.
Thanks for coming, everyone. Have a good night. All favor. I'm. We're still. All the public can come back in. Okay. I want this for a motion to authorize the. The patient is always telling you, you know, the new body. I.